Call to order the October 25th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Robinson for our ceremonial opening.
Great, thank you. We're happy to have everybody here. Please join us in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There's been a request from the applicant of discussion items 6.1 and 6.2, which is 18A01 Green Level West Road and Pine Rail Lane Properties Annexation and 18REZ01 Green Level West Road and Pine Rail Lane for the agenda to be amended to allow these items to be removed from the table and retabled to a date uncertain. So therefore, I would ask for motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And we have the Cary Band-Aid proclamation. And I would invite band director Mac Minnick and his party to meet me at the podium. Well, there they are up there. I was getting worried and was like, where are they?
Hi.
So folks, it's that time of year again when we celebrate and join in in Cary Band-Aid. This one's pretty special. This one's 60 years of Cary Band-Aid.
No way.
And we have even two councilmembers that have participated in Cary Band-Aid. So we all get it. It's a big deal. I love going. I think I've been to every one since I've been mayor. It's a fun time. So I love going there. I can't wait to see what you guys have this year. I've not seen your program, so I'm excited to see what you guys come up with. So to recognize this great day, we're going to read a proclamation in honor of Cary Band-Aid. Recognizing November 3rd, 2018, as the 60th Cary Band-Aid. Whereas Cary High School Band has proven its musical and marching abilities throughout the years by continuing achievements in both national and regional recognition for its accomplishments. And whereas members of the Cary High School Band have brought much honor to the town of Cary and its citizens while also maintaining high scholastic aptitudes. And whereas music plays an increasingly important role in our world today, it is the language of all people and one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. And whereas the band has been a Bands of America Regional finalist from 2011 to 2016, as well as the Bands of America Grand National Semi-finalist in 2011 and again in 2014. The 2016 band was the grand champion of the Cleveland Critique and Competition, as well as the Union Pines Viking Classic, winning every caption. The band was also proud to represent the town of Cary and the Cary High School, and I'll add the town of Cary, in the 90th Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in 2016. It was a hoot from what's in on TV. Having been selected out of 150 other bands. And whereas the 2017 band was a finalist and the grand champion of the Sanderson High School Capital Club in Raleigh, North Carolina. And the 2018 band was the grand champion at the 8th Cleveland High School Critique and Competition. Now therefore, I Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the town of Cary, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council that Saturday, November 3rd, 2018, as Cary Band-Aid and urge all the citizens of Cary and the surrounding areas to join together in honoring and supporting this long Cary tradition, proclaim this 25th day of October 2018.
We thank you very much for once again supporting our very special day. I'd like to introduce real quick the people that are up here. This is Anna Kate Peterson, Michael Shorb, and Noel Asagi. They're this year's three drum majors. Sandy Williams is of course the chair for Cary Band-Aid for many, I think, is this 30? 30 years? Can you imagine that? And this is our current president, Greg Kraus. He's been president for a couple of years now. None of this happens without all of them and all the parents and the kids that put all the work into it. It seems like it wasn't that long ago that we were like, wow, here we are. It's the 50th Cary Band-Aid. Now it's the 60th. But we truly appreciate the town's continued support. We love representing the town and feeling like such a great part of such a wonderful place to live. And we do hope that you can all make it out. We always just pray for dry weather. It can be cold. It can be hot. Either way, that works. But just wet, if you can help us with your thoughts. Because right now, we're looking at the same thing for this weekend for somebody else's show that we're supposed to go to. But we always appreciate the town's support and hope that you can make it out because it really is a great celebration of wonderful achievements from kids all across our state, as well as four bands, I believe, that are coming from Virginia this year as well. So we look forward to it and thank you very much.
I'll be the alumni band for the 6 o'clock National Anthem. I'm practicing. I got the music.
And in case you're wondering who the other councilmember was, it was Jennifer Robinson.
That's right, 31 years ago.
You're not that old, are you?
Thank you for saying that. Yeah. I came here 31 years ago for Cary Band-Aid with my band from Virginia.
Wow. Okay, we're going to move to Public Speaks Out now. Our next agenda item, Public Speaks Out, is on your printed agenda with instructions for speaking at this forum. And if you'd like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rosator to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that works to your benefit since public hearing speakers get more time. When your three minutes has expired, I will interrupt you, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium, and when the green light turns to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the yellow light turns into a red flashing light, that's the point I will interrupt you. And again, not trying to be rude, but just trying to be fair. To help have an efficient Public Speaks Out item, we ask that if you're here with a group, have a spokesperson speak on behalf of the group to reduce repetitive comments. I would also ask that if you're planning on speaking next after the person at the podium, please take a position on my right on the stairs. That way, we know that you're ready to speak and we know we have other speakers coming. I thank everyone in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that may distract from the speakers and the meeting. Now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
I want to apologize before I start because I'm going to talk fast since I have a lot to say and not a lot of time. I'm Joy Bunch, a resident of downtown Cary. I spoke at the April 5th meeting about my concern with doubling the size of the new parking deck. I appreciated that the town manager and Councilman Yerhal met with me to talk about my concerns. I've continued to monitor this project, and once drawings for the decks became public, I once again sat down with Sean and let him know. And he let me know a developer was interested in wrapping the deck and that said developer was working with an architect. I had requested the name of the architect, which I never received, but recently I attended an architecture firm crawl in Raleigh where I was pleasantly surprised to find renderings of the development pinned up the one in the offices. What should give everyone pause, though, is when my husband, who is not an architect, went to go look for these drawings, he did not recognize the project that was planned for downtown Cary. Now, we know these are preliminary concepts, but they did not fit the scale and character of downtown. You have strayed from the Imagine Cary plan for this area. Building height should be complement and reinforce the historic built environment and small-town character and will therefore primarily be two stories except landmark public institutional buildings. Buildings two to four stories may be appropriate along Walnut and South Walker Streets. In order to facilitate redevelopment, since these areas are further away from the historic core of downtown, there will be cases where taller buildings can be accommodated as long as the designs are compatible with the predominant character of the street and adjacent nearby properties, especially historic properties. By building an over 60-foot, seven-level parking deck, you've completely missed the compatibility with the predominant character of the street and nearby properties. I believe the ship has sailed on this development, but I'm worried about other projects coming. What about the existing library site? Development plan near the First Baptist Church? What are the scale of these projects going to be? I understand we need infill construction, but we have no guidelines in place on what that is. In actuality, we need a local historic district in downtown Cary. In fact, the Imagine Cary plan states just this issue. The town does not currently have a local historic district in downtown, which limits the town's ability to protect these properties as they redevelop or as properties around them are developed. The town adopted its Historic Preservation Master Plan that provides guidance for adopting formal preservation policies and programs. A particular note is the development alternative zoning and design standards for the town's historic core to ensure compatible infill development and to reinforce traditional design patterns. The Imagine Cary Plan's policy number one is to foster downtown's authentic character. The intent of this policy is to maintain the historic and authentic character of downtown Cary's built environment. Ever should be made to make this a priority. And I'm running out of time. I can see that. Preservation. So I moved to downtown for a reason. I like the scale of the buildings. Let the taller new development be out at Fenton, which you already have design standards set up for that. Keep, foster downtown's authentic character. We need to focus on what makes downtown Cary downtown Cary. We can have new mix in with the old, but it needs to fit the scale and character of what we currently have. Put in place alternative zoning and design standard for the town center's historic core. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bunch. And if you have additional comments, if you want us to read them, you can give them to the clerk and she'll make sure we get a copy. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and we'll move to the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all the consent agenda items. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'll take a moment to review the consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Distribution of transportation development fee revenue to eligible developers. 18REZ08 Fellowship of Christ Church rezoning. Bid award for Summer Lake Drive storm drainage improvements. Local water supply plan update. Ratification of resolution Twin Lakes Center Development Plan. 18REZ13 Indian Wells rezoning. Resolution for financing Fire Station Number Nine and replacement aerial ladder trucks. Would councilmembers like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments. Our first public hearing is the Fenton District Development Agreement. Deputy Town Manager Russ Overton will present the item and council may take action. Mr. Overton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be with you again tonight to talk to you about the Fenton Mixed Use Development Project. In all, I believe this is actually my sixth time in front of you talking about this project. And tonight, I'm specifically here to give you an overview of the Fenton District Development Agreement prior to opening the required public hearing. This project, Fenton, is all about turning the community's vision and your plan for the Eastern Cary Gateway into reality. We are very appreciative of the state, and specifically the State Property Office, for their decision to sell off 92 acres in the gateway. To highlight just how special this project is, I'd like to take a moment and put it into context with some other development around town. And you've probably seen this slide before. The office space in Fenton is equivalent to about five MetLife office buildings. The retail space is just shy of two Waverly Places. And the number of dwelling units is similar to the number in all of Silverton or the Oxford-Hunt planned unit development. It will be one of the largest developments in Cary, if not the largest development in Cary that we've ever had. Let's take a quick look back over the three-plus years to see the journey we've all been a part of to get to tonight's Development Agreement ordinance adoption. It all started in 2015 when Columbia Development met with staff to discuss a potential development of the site. And you can see on the picture, it's quite different than what we've ended up with today. Discussions really picked up after that, after the adoption of the Eastern Cary Gateway. And ultimately, the entire Imagine Cary Community Plan was adopted in early 2017. And then during the rest of 2017, the real hard work started on the rezoning process. It started with a site visit to Atlanta, which brought the project to life for many of us. Then, public hearings, a work session, where you will recall, we brought in David Owens from the UNC School of Government, where we initially began our discussions about development agreements. And final approval of the rezoning took place back in January. Zoning approval wasn't the end because one of Columbia's more than 100 zoning conditions proposed was regarding their interest in entering into a development agreement for this site. So their condition as part of that rezoning stated that this development cannot proceed without a development agreement approved by the town of Cary, which is why we are here. We were ambitious. We thought that we might be back to you in March or April, right after the zoning approval. But it took nearly nine months of collaboration between our staff and Columbia's team on the details of this 80-plus-page agreement to ensure that what we believe will happen on this project actually will. So let me tell you about the development agreement and in particular, why we have one. State statutes allow them for large-scale and complex projects occurring in multiple phases, extending over multiple periods of years, requiring a long-term commitment by both private and public funds. The Fenton project fits within this description perfectly. When complete, Fenton will have up to 1.2 million square feet of office, 570,000 square feet of retail space, 920 residential units, and up to 450 hotel rooms. Based on an economic impact study by Columbia Development, the Fenton District may generate as much as around $800 million in total investment in Cary. It will generate over 6,000 jobs with an economic output in excess of $2 billion. Three key characteristics of this development agreement are: First, we focus primarily on public infrastructure. Specifically, the necessary public infrastructure, like streets and utilities, needed for the long-term success in the entire gateway area. Public infrastructure that we believe is critical in unlocking the area's potential. Second, this agreement ensures that Fenton will reduce the amount of energy consumed by their new development. Third, and lastly, and something that was very important to us, is the relationship we've developed with Columbia Development over the last three-plus years as the master developer of this project. The public infrastructure portion of this agreement focuses on the southern segment of Trinity Road, Quinard Drive, and Cary Town Boulevard widening, as well as bike, pedestrian signals, turning lanes, stormwater, and other associated infrastructure improvements. It also includes the Iron Gate Greenway on the property, as well as public utilities. In all, totaling roughly $22.5 million for these public improvements that will be constructed by Columbia Development per the terms of this agreement. Upon completion of the public infrastructure, Columbia Development will be reimbursed as development construction benchmarks are reached. Development doesn't happen at once and cannot occur until all public infrastructure is complete, I should say reimbursement cannot occur, until all the development is complete and open for use. Also, all buildings in Phase Areas A and B, which includes the Main Street feature, must be constructed before any final payments are made. And lastly, this is a maximum amount, not to exceed. There's also an energy plan offered by the developer, and it's another key aspect of this agreement. As an interesting fact on how this incentive is, how we're able to offer this incentive is because it is the result, actually, of a 2008 local bill that we asked for through the General Assembly. That local bill has since become state law for the entire state. And this is the first time that we've taken advantage of it and had a development of the size and scale to make a significant contribution to the reduction of energy. The developer has offered to designate a score of 75 or greater in the EPA's Energy Star Program for their office portion of development. This means that their buildings are intended to be in the top 25% in energy consumption of all buildings nationwide. They've also committed to items like LED lighting onsite, electrical vehicle parking stations, hybrid vehicle parking spaces, as well as energy-efficient kitchen equipment in all residential units, and energy-efficient windows and mechanical systems. It's important to point out that this is a higher level of regulation than can be required by our zoning authority or our building code compliance. In total, the town proposes to credit up to $5.5 million in development fees for phase areas A and B. This amount is calculated based on the estimates of fees, development permits, inspections fees for phases A and B, and in-phase A and B only. And the credit only applies to phases A and B, while the energy plan applies to all other phases of the development. Another notable provision of this development agreement is the limits of assignment. What this really means is that Columbia Development cannot leave until significant construction of Phase A and B has occurred, and only with council's approval. The term of the agreement is 25 years and requires annual reviews. There are thresholds for new traffic studies should more development be contemplated, and vesting of development rights to current town regulations are also in there. In all, there are about 80-plus pages of detailed terms and conditions. So in summary, it's clear to see how this truly is a community-defining project. And while it's in our Eastern Cary Gateway, Fenton is a project that will transcend that area and benefit all of Cary and be a real gem in the entire region. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to open it up for tonight's public hearing. And after you close the hearing, I'll be back with a few closing remarks and be available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Now's the time for the public hearing on the Fenton District Development Agreement. And I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. It's good to be back before you. My name is Russell Killen. I'm with Parker Poe. We're the attorney for Columbia Development. My address is 301 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. And I'm really happy to be back. It's been a while. I have very little substantive to add to the presentation. Staff has done a good job as always. Russ has given you a lot of good information. But I mentioned to the mayor, I did want to get up here and at least publicly thank you and especially thank the staff for this process. This has been a long road. We have spent a lot of time here in Cary. We have been through a lot of negotiations, but you, and I've sat in your table, you should be very proud of how your staff conducted themselves through this. They were professional. They were persistent. This was not always an easy process, but time and time again, we came back to that shared vision of what we've talked about and what we want with this development that we know is Fenton, and we were always able to work through it and find something that would push this region forward. So I just wanted to come up here tonight, thank you for your time and your investment, to thank the staff for their time and their investment, especially the attorney's office. Again, we spent a lot of time going through this. This 80-page document has been through a lot of iterations, and so it's been a good process. Columbia Development could not be happier to be in this position, ready to get started. I have with me tonight Abbott Goodwin, who needs no introduction, Jenkins Williamson with Columbia Development. We also have Joy Wayman with the State Property Office. They have been a partner with us through this whole thing and have assisted us at every turn as we needed to tweak things to perfect this vision. So I want to thank them as well. At this point, we're ready to move forward, ready to make this shared vision reality. We will take any questions if you have them, but if not, I don't intend to occupy any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Killen. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to our councilmembers for questions or comments.
Mayor, I had a couple more comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, go right ahead.
I want to throw it to you. Looking at the future of the project, I just wanted to give you a couple next steps after a decision tonight. This will allow Columbia Development to purchase the property, at which time the zoning will actually go into effect, if you remember that nuance to the zoning approval. They plan to start grading the site and seek development approval during next year. So a lot of grading will happen in the next calendar year. And then work towards building construction and ultimately openings in 2020 and 2021 timeframe. And staff recommends that you approve the development agreement, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Back to council. Questions or comments? If not, we'll get to the motion. But before we do get to the motion, this is a little bit different. Requires two-thirds majority, or five of us, to vote affirmative for this to pass. So just letting you know. Do I have a motion? Don't be shy.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
I move to approve the resolution as attached to the staff report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Overton.
Thank you to the staff.
Thank you.
And thank you to the staff. That's a lot of hours. I can't even imagine how much staff time was put into this.
They really spared us a lot of work.
They did.
I mean, that's an understatement of the day.
It took me like five attempts just to get through like a few dozen of the pages. Whereas, anyway, moving right along, our second public hearing is 18REZ2168 Good Hope Church Road. Senior Planner Katie Dry will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but instead, it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and will return to us at a future date. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, Council. This is a request to rezone 1.58 acres at 6808 Good Hope Church Road. The site is on the north side of Good Hope Church Road and is just east of Highway 55 and the CSX Railroad. The entire parcel is 2.15 acres, and the applicant is requesting to rezone a portion of the lot, 1.58 acres, to allow the development of one detached dwelling. The property contains an existing historic house, the Hearst House, built in 1930. It's located at the front of the property adjacent to Good Hope Church Road. The Hearst House, however, is not associated with the rezoning. The applicants are proposing to rezone the rear portion of the lot to R40 conditional use to allow the development of one detached dwelling. The current zoning is office, research, and development. Properties to the west and south are also zoned ORD. And they've been zoned as such for at least 25 years prior to the adoption of the town of Cary's 1996 land use plan and any special area plans for the historic Carpenter area. And the applicants are requesting to rezone the northern portion of this site to R40 conditional use. The applicants have indicated that they intend to leave the front portion of the lot as ORD. This would allow them to preserve the Hearst House in its current location and upfit it for the use as a professional office. There are no conditions regarding the preservation of the house, however, because it's not There are no conditions regarding the preservation of the house, however, because it's not part of the rezoning. Staff has evaluated the case with the Imagine Cary Community Plan. We note that the site is within the historic Carpenter Special Planning Area and that the rezoning will help to preserve the Hearst House by keeping it within its immediate historic context. When we look at the Future Growth Framework Map category, it is a mixed neighborhood development category, which encompasses neighborhoods within the northwestern part of Cary, and the sites within the historic Carpenter Special Planning Area, which is one of five special planning areas in Cary. And when we look within the special planning area, the guidance for this area is indicated in the brown here on this map under number five. It's called the Neighborhood North Area, which describes the development and new development to be residential development, which should support the character of the historic area, and it should be low density. So staff's preliminary finding is that this rezoning to R40 CU will bring the site further into compliance with the plan. According to the Town of Cary's maps, there may be a stream buffer to the north of the site. And looking at the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, there are no existing or proposed greenways on the site or adjacent to the site. The proposed Old Carpenter Greenway corridor is shown south of the subject site, and there are existing and proposed parks within about a mile to the east and to the west. Good Hope Church Road is a local road, and it will remain a local road according to the transportation plan. The Carpenter Fire Station Road Realignment and Railroad Grade Separation Project is to the south of the property, and in completion of that project, the bridge over CSX for Good Hope Church Road will be closed to vehicular traffic. However, staff and NCDOT are evaluating the feasibility of using this bridge for bike and pedestrian use. For the neighborhood meeting, as well as the public hearing tonight, properties within 800 feet were notified. The neighborhood meeting was held on September 5th, and no attendees other than the applicant attended, and town staff has not received any calls either before the neighborhood meeting or before the public hearing tonight regarding this case. The applicant is here to share comments on their request, and following the public hearing and the applicant, the staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. This time, I would invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening. We're Michelle and Chris Humphries. We're excited that this is the plan that we have before you. Katie, you always do a great job. It's been working, great working with her. We want to build a home there, and we can't do it because it's ORD. So we have to do it. We have to change it to R something, and we like the idea of our, you know, our property being what it already is there, being wide and spread out and not things on top of each other. So R40 seemed like the right thing to do, and so anyway, we're excited. We understand we're a long way from it still, but we're still excited, and everything Katie said is true. We're planning to leave the house on the front side and hopefully, prayerfully, it'll turn into a business and hopefully, but so, and we're happy to ask, answer questions. And if you don't have any questions, thank you for your time and consideration, and...
Thank you.
Great. What an unusual rezoning.
Okay. Now's the time for the, for the public hearing for rezoning 18 RZ 21 6808 Good Hope Church Road, and I would invite a first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I've sat here for 11 years, and I don't know that I've ever heard anybody ask for It's usually going from R40 to something more dense. Or, yeah, ORD, R10, R12, conditional use, something, townhomes, whatever. So it's, it's interesting, just like you said, yeah. So I don't see anything wrong with it.
Any other comments?
Ditto, but only two and a half years.
I'm not getting in this.
In the old days, you heard it.
You'd have to use decades, not years. Anyway, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and honestly, I don't see a lot of problems with this, but this is just a prediction. So it will return to us probably in a couple of months, yeah. And so that probably means early next year or late this year.
Probably early next year.
Early next year, and you'll finally be able to do all the things you want to do.
But keep in mind, the land to your west is still ORD.
Right.
So someday, there will be stuff on top of stuff, so that will impact your, your wide-open spaces. Okay.
Just not on our spot.
Plant tall trees.
Yeah, plant tall trees now.
All righty, we're going to move to our third public hearing. It's 18 RZ 20 McGregor Center Lot 2A PDD Amendment. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Granin will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning, and it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review or recommendation. Ms. Granin.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to amend a portion of an existing planned development district located on Lake Pine Drive at the intersection of McGregor Pines Drive and Lake Pine Drive, highlighted here in yellow. Subject property is zoned Planned Development District Minor. They're not proposing to change that designation, but what the applicant has proposed is to increase the number of allowed personal service establishments from one to two and to add commercial indoor recreation as a permitted use. What is a personal service establishment, you might ask? That would be a business that provides individual services to customers located on the site of the business and would include such uses as travel agencies, dry cleaners, tailor shops, one-on-one fitness instruction, for example, a personal trainer. It would not include indoor/outdoor recreation uses, which is where things such as a taekwondo studio, a karate school, a dance school, things that address large groups of people. It would not fall into that category. So we've had uses like that operating here in the past. Back in 2012, there was a karate school there on the site. In 2016, we amended our ordinance and we added that commercial indoor recreation category. So this amendment would help bring those former uses back into compliance. And in our preliminary analysis of the request, we found that this would both bring that use into compliance, and it would expand opportunities for future businesses on the property, and it would also help this shopping center thrive. The Growth Framework Map does designate this as a commercial center. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified of the request, and the property was posted. There were no attendees at the September 5th public neighborhood meeting, and no correspondence, emails, or phone calls from citizens prior to this public hearing. So this concludes staff's presentation. Following the public hearing will be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granin. Now's the time for the public hearing, 18 RZ 20 McGregor Center Lot 2A PDD Amendment, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments. Seeing none, we'll remind everyone that this goes to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. All right, we'll move to our fourth public hearing, and it's three annex, it is three annexation public hearings coming, and Mr. Wayne Nicholas will introduce the items, and council will take action after conducting the public hearing. Our first public hearing is 18A 14 Harsh and Rada Ketchy Annexation, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This first request is for annexation of 4.15 acres of property located at 100 Harmony Hill Lane, approximately 1,000 feet east of the Davis Drive and Yorkhill Drive intersection. The property is contiguous to the existing corporate limits. It is located within Cary's ETJ and its own residential 40. The request is not associated with a development plan or rezoning. The property owner is wishing to connect the property to town utilities and develop a detached dwelling.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for a public hearing, 18A 14 Harsh and Rada Ketchy Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 18A 14.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We go to our second annexation, 18A 15 Anthony F. Farrar and Mary E. Smith Annexation. And once again, Mr. Nicholas will introduce the item.
This request is for annexation of two properties totaling 1.2 acres, located at 802 and 804 Rochelle Road, approximately 250 feet west of the intersection with Evans Road. Annexation will also include 0.262 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The properties are contiguous to the corporate limits. They are located within Cary's ETJ and Zone Residential 12, and currently each property is developed with a detached dwelling. The request is not associated with a proposed development plan or rezoning. Property owner wishes to connect both dwellings to town utilities.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 18A 15 Anthony Farrar, Mary Smith Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, opening up the council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve annexation petition 18A 15.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And our last public hearing, 18A 16 Balke and Rada Sharma Annexation, and Mr. Nicholas will once again introduce this item.
This last request was for annexation of 0.625 acres located at 1551 Wilson Road, approximately 1,700 feet north of the intersection with Chapel Hill Road. The property is located within Cary's ETJ and is contiguous to the corporate limits. It was rezoned in February 2018 to transitional residential conditional use to allow for the development of lots for detached dwellings. The request is associated with a development plan that proposes three lots to be served by town utilities. Plan is currently in the review process, and based on the provisions of the LDO, it can be approved administratively by staff when it's determined that the plan meets all applicable requirements of the LDO. In accordance with the ordinance, the property must be annexed before the development plan can be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for a res, public hearing, 18A 16 Balke and Rada Sharma Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an annexation petition 18A 16. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas, for these public hearing introductions. We now move to discussion items. We had three on the agenda. At the beginning of our meeting, we tabled indefinitely the first two items, so that takes us to the third item under discussion, and that's Kokabuth Amphitheater Management Plan and Budget, and that's going to be presented by Cultural Arts Manager Lyman Collins. Mr. Collins.
Good evening, council. Annually, I think you realize that we come to you with the Kokabuth Amphitheater Management Plan and Budget. This plan reviews highlights of the season that we are wrapping up and presents a plan for the 2019 season, and also presents the facility budget. As usual, the amphitheater again performed better than budgeted, though it did not produce the surplus that it did last year. Nonetheless, it's still a very positive picture. The season starts each year with the Chinese Lantern Festival. This gives you a preview of some of the lantern displays that are planned for this year. Each year, the festival is, has different lanterns. Usually, though, the dragon is the same, but I will tell you, I didn't show you a picture here because I want you to be surprised.
Dragon's different?
The dragon's changing this year, so get ready for that. You know, we're going into the, I believe this is the fourth year of the, of the Chinese Lantern Festival, and there's some thought that it may start, may have peaked, or it may, you know, not continue to have the, the appeal that it has. But I will tell you that compared to this time last year, we sold three times the number of tickets.
Wow.
So we don't really see any sign of the public interest waning right now. This really gives you a great overview of the facility. It's set up for SummerFest with the North Carolina Symphony, and as you know, the Symphony and SummerFest is really a bedrock of the amphitheater's programming. It exists because of SummerFest. It is the summer home of the North Carolina Symphony, something that I think we're all very proud of. It's a great example of how the amphitheater serves as a community asset and a major contributor to Cary's quality of life. This past season, Symphony President Sandy McDonald thanked the town for its ongoing support, and here you'll see councilors Don Franz and Ken George, joined by amphitheater namesake Kokabuth, to receive that recognition. National concerts, of course, provide the largest revenue source for the facility. Concerts are promoted, which means that the town does not risk dollars, but generates revenue from ancillaries like concessions, parking, ticket rebates, things like that. This year, frankly, was not a good year for our national acts. There were 13 concerts budgeted. 10 were actually scheduled, 2 were canceled with weather impacts, and that left only 8, which had a big impact on attendance. That information is all outlined in the staff report. That also affected revenue. But, you know, we're not alone in that. I would note that at Red Hat Amphitheater in Raleigh, concerts were down 18% and revenue was down 30%, so not just us. We do have a new plan for 2019. Previously, there had been a preferred promoter, where a single promoter had priority booking for the facility, but we are now going to an open promoter model, which will allow for a variety of promoters to come in. We already have holds for 14 potential concerts from four different promoters, so I think we will see a definite uptick next year. Festivals are a significant program area for the amphitheater. Diwali, seen here, is the second biggest single-day event after July 4th. Other major community-based festivals include the Chinese Dragon Boat Festival and Oktoberfest, and of course, the Chinese Lantern Festival. There are also five big food and beverage festivals that we have each year: Beer and Bacon, Great Grapes, Beer Bourbon BBQ, and we had two new ones this year: Tacos and Taps and Brunch Fest. Of course, we could not let it pass without noting that this year's Diwali was extra special, as Mayor Weinberg showed off his dancing skills.
And his toes.
He was also joined by Mayor Pro Tim Bush. That's her, their second from the right, in case you can't recognize her, as well as State Representative and former council member Adcock and the Morrisville Mayor. They're joined by the choreographers who helped, helped provide their dances. Really, really was quite a show and gave a real nice feel for SummerFest. Here we have former Mayor Booth on hand to help review the budget. I want to give a special shout-out to the Finance Office, which has done a great job in pulling these numbers together. I will allow you to review them at your leisure. I'll just note that if you go through all of this, you will see that we, we are to align the amphitheater's fiscal year with the town's fiscal year. There's a need of 101,000 and some change for the upcoming season, and as I said, full details are in the staff report. I think, we hope that this shows that the 2019 season will continue the amphitheater's tradition with a colorful and bang-up year. We have these recommendations for you: Approval of the SMG Management Plan and Budget, Approval of the Public Works Special Projects Request, and authorize staff to make the necessary budget adjustments as outlined to align the amphitheater budget with the town's fiscal year. And with that, I will take your questions. And let's go back to this slide, because it's really cool.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Questions for Mr. Collins?
Just comments. I mean, I'm really excited about allowing other promoters to get involved in the act. I will say, from a personal observation, the last year or two, I've noticed a decline in the number of and quality of the acts that we've had, and I think this really provides for a great opportunity to bring in some big-name acts and some shows, so I'm very excited about that. I think all the festivals and events that we have there every year get better and better and better. You mentioned a time, we just had Diwali. It was an amazing event. I mean, I, I don't know how many people attended that, but...
About 15,000.
Gosh, tons. So we're killing it on the events and some of the special things that we do out there. I think it's the concerts and things that were just not where we were a couple, few years ago, so I'm very optimistic that these changes will get us back to where we need to be, and I thank you all for your work on that.
100% agree.
I think the open booking is a great idea for, to try that and see what happens, and it's great you're getting results already. Also want to mention one thing that Lyman didn't is the new general manager for SMG, Taylor Travisari. If you haven't met Taylor, you should.
I actually was going to mention that at the very end. Taylor is with us tonight, and I think most of you have met him. Maybe a couple of you haven't, but Taylor is with us here tonight, so thank you.
I think he's going to provide great leadership for us.
Other comments, questions? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Can you forward to the next slide?
Special Projects Request, and authorize staff to make necessary budget adjustments as outlined to align the amphitheater's budget with the town's fiscal year.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you for all the work you do out there.
Thank you, council.
Well, that completes the agenda, and unless there's other items that I'm not aware of, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, second.
We're done.
And the second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
That's crazy.
This has been a production of Cary TV. Visit the Town of Cary website at townofcary.org.